By how many people I don't know. So it's gonna be an exciting afternoon, I think. I want to share some amazing news. If you've read my blog, you know about this. One of the -- two of the students in a class I'm doing at Duke called Future Class, self-dubbed, which is a collaborative peer-to-peer class. I basically said I've had really exciting opportunities this fall. If anyone wants to play along with me, come along, but you have to make your own class. And we didn't know at the time that Mozilla Foundation was going to adopt us as Haystack, the organization I'm co-founder of, as the Mozilla of higher education and invite us and offer some scholarships to our students to come to the Mozilla Festival, but we did that. And we had a tent called Storming the Academy where we were taking lessons from the open web and thinking about how we could use those to transform higher education, traditional higher education. Everybody else, all the other 400 people, were open web developers, some of them very famous, like the Obama administration developer is on the board at Mozilla. We had a fabulous time. Nick was there. Nick Burns is a senior, right? Senior in public policy. Mary Kayton was our fifth Beatle. She wasn't able to come to Barcelona with us. The only person in the class that wasn't able to come sadly, but who did everything to help us get ready for the trip. And she's a graduate student in English. And there were two other graduate students, one from Carolina, one other undergrad, and one recent alum who may be coming today. And they invented a prototype for an app at the closing ceremony of Mozilla Foundation. Mitchell Baker, the CEO, said that we didn't know it, but they were looking for apps for Mozilla to develop. And it's been six months of developer attention, taking apps from prototype to fruition. They'd chosen three apps they thought were worthy of their attention. It's gonna be on the Mozilla homepage. And of the five apps they chose, three were Haystack apps, one by the students in Future Class that we're gonna be developing. That's kind of a stunned -- we were flabbergasted. We were really, really flattered. And I'm telling you that just because that Future Class is kind of the prototype for this master's degree that we're thinking about, a really different arrangement of humanists and technology and scientists and computer scientists that's based on the idea that we live in a really different kind of world than traditional education was built for. That almost all features of formal education that we know now were institutionalized basically to facilitate arrangements in the industrial era. And we don't live in that era anymore, as we all know. And we haven't really changed our institutions in fundamental ways. And as far as we know, this program is the only one at a research university like this. Paris Five has just started a program that's similar because I've been in contact with them all spring. And they've got one going. It's not a formal degree program, but they want to partner with us. They came to Mozilla as well, and we've already been planning partnerships. In fact, they extended -- they were so impressed by the Duke students, they said, "Would you mind if we brought them over to China this summer?" These students who took a risk on a very wild class are having a pretty spectacular time of it, and I'm having a blast, so. What I thought I would do, instead of me just talking, we've passed around cards, two cards, and I'd love for everybody to just take four minutes. And on card one, write what three things you find most promising about the MAKN, just very quickly. And on card two, what three questions you hope to have answered at this meeting about the MAKN. We're then gonna do a little mix-up experiment afterwards and collect the cards because this will be great feedback for us as we move forward. But I also just, I don't want to do all the talking, so. You need a cheat sheet. This is a one-pager about the MAKN. As many of you know, the MAKN's been up on the press three comments for the last seven months. You've said this for maybe two minutes. And can I ask you to talk to the person to the right of you, whoever that may be? Look at your two cards and circle among your six possibilities, and each question, circle the most important question that you two can agree upon about what things you find most promising in the MAKN and what questions you have. But I want you to turn to the right, talk about it, and come up with a conversation. Come up with together. If you don't want to do right hand or body. Hello. So are you gonna -- oh, good. So then you have to circle ones. And then you do the same. Three lines, right? Can I have a tiebreaker again? And so there were two reasons, at least two reasons why we're doing this experiment. One is content. I can't wait to see what you all sort of come up with. The other is because there was that silent moment, and then there was this moment where, you know, adults, many of whom were probably -- am I guessing many of you have never met one another?
Yeah.
Were suddenly in an incredibly engaged and intense conversation. If the first classroom, if the first thing, the silently writing by yourself was the model of the 20th century classroom, I'm hoping what we just did in part two, that talking, meeting people you haven't met, exchanging ideas, having come up with ideas independently, but now having to somehow come to some kind of agreement on something that represents, that you don't feel somehow betrayed by having made that choice of representing others, somehow that, to me, not only feels like the kind of 21st century classroom that we're striving at, but a kind of 21st century world. Whether that's achievable or not is another issue, and because it's such a huge formidable issue, we need this, we need programs like this. But in other words, the cacophony of people who don't know each other, talking together and trying to come to some kind of agreement when before they walked into the room, they might not have really known very much about one another, is kind of the situation many of us are dealing with in the business world, and I think more and more in the intellectual world too, especially when we're pushed outside of the boundaries of our disciplines. I know some of you in this room, and the people I do know are not remotely in the same disciplines. And if we have a chance, I'd like to talk about that. But even before, since you've been so kind, first of all, and coming and engaging in this kind of unusual form of Q&amp;A, I'd love to just have some people talk about what they wrote on the cards. So maybe let me ask somebody. Oh, would you mind? That would be fantastic, Nancy. Actually, before I go any further, I want to introduce who Haystack is. On the MAKN, it says that Duke asked Haystack. I have to say, it was really David Bell from the Graduate School who first asked me, which I don't think I really should call myself Haystack, but asked me if I would be interested in spearheading, thinking about a new kind of master's degree. And I said, "Obviously, if he's coming to me, it's not gonna be conventional, and it has to be collective." So we put it out and got feedback and looked at other universities and looked at other possibilities for a master's degree, and put it up on a public website. Now we're having a public meeting. Then we're gonna make the faculty committee. I've talked to many, a number of you in this room and many of others. But usually, you start with the concept, you start with a faculty committee, and then you start going through the approval process. We kind of reversed it and wanted to get feedback from the world first and from a group that didn't know each other first before we solidified it into like my eight friends who I know will agree with me. Okay? Because that doesn't seem like a very interesting idea. The motto of Haystack, the organization I co-founded in 2002 that now has 5,000 members and 200 students on scholarships at 78 institutions around the country, they're small scholarships, but they're nonetheless scholarship, $300. There's scholarships that make an institution figure out how to give $300 to a student at their institution to be part of a virtual institution. You know, a virtual network? That's not easy, as you all know, to do that. So that was, that's the thinking behind that. Nancy Kimberly is the project manager for Haystack. Anna Rose Brett is a recent graduate from Duke and is our intern, and also a fabulous folk singer who dropped your record you recorded this weekend. You will all hear about it when the record drops, because you can have a folk festival and Anna will star. Mandy Daly in the back is the executive program project director for Haystack. And Haystack also runs the McCarty Foundation's $2 million a year digital media and learning competition. So actually, all of these Haystack people are people who run the digital media and learning competition and also Haystack, kind of in our spare time. Ruby Seunrich, who is our director of new media strategies. Cheryl Grant is the director of social networking for the winners of the digital media and learning competition. If you think those are all the same job, you need to take this master's degree. These are highly specialized, highly specialized and complex skills, and no one in the industry has them all figured out. And this is sort of the magnificent seven. For the first time in my whole career, I'm working with all women, which is quite interesting and fascinating, given the world we're in. At Mozilla Foundation, we were at the festival in Barcelona, we were a little unusual. Okay, so I wanted to thank all of these folks. Most promising things about the master's? Let me, I'm gonna see. Go ahead. Yes. Bunch of your group, you and your partner, circle.
I think one of the things we found interesting is their focus on producing things, skill building, that discussion. I'm really interested personally in hearing about how that might play out.
Skill building. Most promising, how about you? Go ahead.
For me, the opportunity for disciplinary advancement and contribution is sort of on the forefront of collaboration.
Joe, why don't you go?
This wasn't mine, but John's. Marks, the focus on problems rather than disciplines.
Cheryl?
Yes. I think the open peer review, student-student peer review assessment.
Interesting. None of these are overlapping yet. Do other people have different ones? Yes, Bridget?
I like the practice of connecting students to something in the real world.
Couching is sort of in the word you used a couple times, complexity, the vision seems to be one of sort of emergence and self-organization of content.
Riding the Facebook curve.
Riding the Facebook curve for social networking and social media. Excellent. We were lucky enough to have that movie previewed here. We were one of the preview sites for the movie. That was pretty interesting to get to meet the actors and hear Aaron Sorkin actually talk about what he was thinking about in the movie. Riding the Facebook curve is a big one. You know, how you go from the West Wing and the presidency to Facebook. Very, very interesting.
Sort of spinning off of what you said, I think something that's perhaps missing is philosophy and epistemology, the emergence and complexity. We've got a lot more to say about it.
So would that be on one of the questions side or on the promising side? We're still doing the promising side or both?
It would be promising if it were.
So I think we should put that on the question. I would put that on the question side. Will there be a way to add more epistemology, philosophy? Promising? Any others? Said?
I think a lot is about people. This is attracting some of the best varieties to most popular people in this community.
Magnet for true people, that's good. Nick?
I think retrofitting deep thinking.
Retrofitting deep thinking? That's such a -- Nick was, it was Nick's idea to come up with this classroom attention barometer, the, to do a form of it that Mozilla adopted. Retrofitting deep thinking is a Nick comment. That's very big. Any other students here who have comments they want to make? Who thought some, that found something promising? Sam?
Moving from machine to organism.
You have fabulous students. Thank you. Anything else? What they find fascinating is, you know, I'm not sure I would have listed any of those as the most promising feature, which is of course, again, duh. Why, but yeah, that's the most promising feature, right? That there are all these other kinds of possibilities here. I don't want to do anything with that except just keep it up there because it's such an interesting list. And as I said, we'll gather other questions up here, we'll gather those cards, and we'll make some kind of a wiki or do something to visualize the questions and put them together. What about the other side? What questions, what challenges? I hope, I hope they're challenging questions. Questions do you have about the master's? Yes, Wendy?
What?
Not Wendy. Sorry. I did it.
I responded.
Truly.
Would this program help students in traditional graduate fields acquire technical skills? The question that I have is, you know, how isolated would this degree be and what kind of access would students in other traditional PhD, master's programs have to the kinds of learning that's taking place in the?
For this part of the program, I think Dean from the Graduate School, David Bell is here. You know, Humanities, True Humanities, here, director of the Franklin Humanities Institute. Ian Balcom is here, and I'm gonna ask for help because I'm not sure about all the answers to some. I know I won't have all the answers, and I need, I need help on this. My gut is that this, this program is specifically designed, and I think this works for accreditation. I now defer completely to David Bell on this, for accreditation and approval, that it has to be a standalone program that's intended as a, not standalone in the sense that it doesn't have a departmental affiliation, it would be attached to the Franklin Humanities Institute, but it, it would borrow from, use, contribute to, you know, cooperate with other programs, but it would not be, it would be a terminal degree. Is that correct? Can you say more about that?
Well, you can answer the question or address the question on a lot of different levels. I mean, this obviously is going to be a paying master's program, so the question arises, if people come in from other directions that are not actually recruited into the program, how do you manage tuition and that kind of stuff? So there's a, there's a level of kind of nuts and bolts, just credit and tuition issue at stake. So that's one level, but there, you know, there are intellectual levels to this as well. I mean, if it's located in the Franklin Humanities Institute, there are gonna be some collaborations going on, for sure.
Yeah, the non-structural question is, I hope there, you know, like, for example, one of the places where students might have residencies would be at these amazing Franklin Humanities labs. If the program were going now, I can't believe there wouldn't be students who'd want a residency in the Haiti lab. What an astonishing experience on every level, project management, humanitarian, business level, and applying deep cultural knowledge to an incredibly vexing problem.
I have wondered whether within some iteration, either immediately or, you know, post-emergence of the program itself, there could be a coordination between the specific coursework that MAKN would offer, its core requirements, some of the work in the labs, some of the elective courses, and work for students within other PhD tracks. So whether in the way in which MAKN would be open to coursework that is being offered in other departments, it, there might be a reciprocal relationship for students within PhD programs in history or anthropology or, you know, whatever field, you know, what Michael wanted nominating, could have a track through it that would certainly, in addition to the specific, I think, good that would be delivered to students completing a terminal degree, for PhD students at Duke more broadly to have the opportunity to engage with a program like this, I think would be incredibly advantageous. As David has said, there, you know, would be specific complications that could or couldn't be addressed if that was, if that was a desire. But I certainly think that's something of interest for an iteration of the program at some point and a way in which you can serve both these particular students and potential, potentially the humanities and other disparate configurations more broadly.
Yeah, just to address the question and inflect a hard deal on the lines of what you had said, but specifying it a little bit more. I think there's considerable interest in graduate certificates that also ride on existing PhD students or other graduate students. And so while that's not necessarily exactly the proposal on the table, which is to have an MA, one could imagine part of this serving the purpose of a graduate certificate that would provide the practical skills that students who are doing conventional or traditional PhDs might want to get. And so that could be an overlap area between the MAKN and something more like a graduate certificate in women's studies or a graduate certificate in performance studies, some of the other things.
Thank you. One thing I know, we can add, I think I can add about, add this, my friend Tony O'Driscoll, who's over in Fuqua, and I've talked about the difficulty of working across schools. It's possible I'll be moving half of my line over into the business school after my sabbatical is over next year, but, but even, even with that, it's still hard to do that. And one thing we're talking about is I would be delighted to come talk to your students in Fuqua about culture and context, which I, every time I lecture or consult in business school, I'm told the two most important words in business schools today are culture and context in the global world. Those are huge. I would love to come talk to Fuqua students about culture and context. And I would love it if Tony would come talk to our students about managing in a complex global world. Tony teaches in the GEMBA program, right?
Cross continent.
Would say?
Cross continent.
Cross continent.
Cross continent.
Continental. So that would be something we could do just for the sheer delight of learning and teaching that wouldn't require complex, and boy, they are complex negotiations across programs, right? It would be tremendously beneficial to students in both ways. And if a university can't manage that, the university doesn't deserve to exist. I mean, it just doesn't. It just doesn't. That's sort of my passion in this. The phrase I've been, I blogged, it's been quoted a lot around the world, is that if your classroom can be reproduced by a computer screen, it should be. In other words, if we're not doing something really different, why not do it cheaper online? You know, and being, and managing those, those kinds of things and giving our students some really special thing that might not work within the institutional structures, I think would be a hallmark of this, of this program. I'd really love to model that for other programs around the university and maybe even push some of those divisions that require goodwill, too much goodwill and not enough institutional flexibility. That's phase two. Tim?
So are you, you described the program as somewhat self-contained in terms of the students that would be taking the class, will you, classes, would you then draw upon existing classes at Duke and their personnel? Or would you hire new staff? What about buying out existing faculty, staff time to staff these classes? How is all that gonna work?
There's a lot of different levels, and it's certainly not all worked out. One is, I really would love it, this is a, this is the easy one, to be able to raise enough grant money or, you know, philanthropic money or whatever, to be able to hire some postdocs. Because I think in this job market, there are people coming out of the profession that could really, first of all, give us so much because of the perspective they have to offer and gain so much in terms of the rest of their careers by having two or three years in and a program that is like no other program in the country. So I would love to be able to build postdocs into the, into the program. So that's one thing. Two, we did a kind of a back-of-the-envelope inventory of really fabulous courses around the university that don't get enough enrollments, partly because they're either isolated in departments or there's not enough attention to them, or they don't really fit. I would love to partner with people in those classes and figure, in those, in those programs and figure out a way that their classes can actually make and really use the energy and the attention of this program. And I know it's gonna get a lot of, well, it's already getting international attention. I think it's gonna get more to infuse and to throw a spotlight on the fabulous courses that aren't making. For courses, I know this is true for yours, that are already oversubscribed, we would do, have buyouts that would have to not be ripoff buyouts. They'd have to be some form of generous buyouts. Master's programs can be cash cows. If this really is going to transform higher education or propose a model for really transform thinking about higher education, this is not a cash cow master's degree. I wouldn't be interested in having anything to do with it if it were just a cash cow. I want to change education, and I want Duke to be the leader in that. I don't care about a cash cow. It'll break even, even with generous subsidies to faculty. We can get it to break even by year three. At least that's what our, and with postdocs and all that, we think we can get it to break even by year two or three. But that, that's a third way we were thinking of doing. You know, so people don't have to do things like, I was just talking about with me and Tony, where we're actually doing extra work in order to get around the system. If this is approved by the university, I would then like to start working, the next thing, in figuring out better ways, more fluid ways that we can account, that we can count for faculty time at the university. That's a, that's a kind of a pet project of mine that's a little different from what you, from what you asked, but I can go on that topic for a long, long time. But in other words, flexible in multiple ways, but not all of them, we hope, depending on just people of goodwill wanting to make something work that institutionally can't work right now. Deans and unions, there might be better answers or differences?
Well, I mean, if you read the project, you see there's a core group of courses and an elective group of courses. And I think Kath is, and my hope is that in those elective courses, that there can be some collaboration of the people offering those courses to reformat them so they're still within the disciplinary area where they're offered, but also be, you know, flexible enough to go toward this audience as well, basically.
I was thinking basically of four required courses, and then the other four classes would be fleshed out according to the students' interests.
I think one of the things to add addition to that, so the program requires a series of, obviously a series of classes. I think what is sort of the way this has been designed is that there would be a combination of classes, post-seminar opportunities, in effect, internships in different, either extra Duke or in-house Duke opportunities through the labs or other forum. But for any degree-granted program to work, there obviously needs to be a core faculty whose commitment is beyond that, the classes they teach, the advising, the mentoring, the sense of a commitment to the program, is a strong primary commitment, just out of time and of passion. And exactly how to work that out, you know, what, what that group of faculty is who are willing to work intensely over a period of years with students, help them in this renovated, not thesis, but still, you know, master's final project requirement. There would need to be a group of faculty who self-identifies, this is a project that is really worth my time in combination with whatever buyouts or co-teaching or whatever, whatever they're likely to be.
Speaking of which, if you put their names on those cards, we will try to answer all the questions, and we will, and if you indicate that you're very interested in being one of those core faculty, you know, this is a great opportunity to get, for you to identify yourself in that way. We already have a very long list, and about 40 people have said they wanted to be interested, wanted to be involved in somewhat, which I think is. wanted to be involved in somewhat, which I think is, again, astonishing. And it's from every department, from Fuqua in engineering and Nicholas School of the Environment to history and philosophy and English and Lit and ISIS, of course. I, you know, there's some programs like the M, new MFA program and ISIS. We haven't worked out those relationships yet, but I think absolutely we are sister or brother of whatever programs. And those are programs where we want to maximize how much we can help each other and support each other across in different ways. And I know there are other possibilities as well.
I think just of curiosity, that was a close to a question, but the, someone mentioned a social network and it seems like that really underscores the narrative of the, this kind of new world flourishing on people getting as far away from the university as fast as they can to be able to be successful. I mean, like the story of our-
Oh, you mean dropping out of college?
Yeah, that's the way.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the Google billionaires and, and Facebook. So, so what, I guess I wonder, what would someone do in this program that would, that would counteract that? I mean, what would, what would the skill set be?
I have so much to say on this, having just come back from Mozilla, where we were with four hundred geniuses, many who have no, you know, drop out of high school. You know, I felt like everybody I talked to was Mark Zuckerberg or Bill, Bill Gates. And they did me the honor. I mean, because we were the only institution representing formal education among peer-to-peer university, open ed, all the various open education platforms that are around. Michelle Baker and I were asked to keynote. She did open learning and, I don't know, um, Freedom in the Web and I did learning. And I started by saying how humbling it was to have started an organization in 2002 where we really felt inspired by peer learning and wanted to use that as a method to transform traditional institutions and then to be invited in the midst of the people who are actually doing it on a day-to-day level, who built the World Wide Web, you know, as volunteers, who built Wikipedia as volunteers, you know, here they all, this was the open source hacker community. And as soon as I wasn't the arrogant person from Duke who has some notoriety as an academic, whatever defensiveness about, hey, we don't need education, fell completely away. I started quading the term underdog arrogance. It fell completely away. And it was touching to have people, all, the whole conference constantly. And I think some of our students felt us two coming up to us and saying, wow, I wish this program had existed when we were in college, I might have stayed in college. It was, it was, it was phenomenal. It was phenomenal. I mean, these, these were the people, right? I mean, these, these were the Mark Zuckerbergs and the Bill Gateses and the open, and even more so because they're open source people, right? These are the people that are working hard to keep the web as open as possible. Pretty, pretty massive. Richard?
Maybe what's needed is some sort of space where students can come and learn to be entrepreneurial so they don't have to leave the university-
Yes, yes.
-to do it. They leave it because it's not a friendly-
Yes.
-environment. And I know Pratt has started to do some of that and Tim's done a lot of work with building spaces where students can come in and invent and use technology tools, but it, it seems like that's a missing link.
Absolutely. And I, I couldn't agree more. And I hope some of the professors that teach in this program, and I don't know if closure is, if this is an accreditation issue, are, you know, the Mark Zuckerbergs who live in Durham, of which there's quite a lot. The problem is not everybody who drops out of college becomes the world's youngest multi-billionaire. You know, the, the drop up, the, we saw that at this festival too. People who dropped out of college because they just didn't see it was about them and are leaving pretty marginal lives. You know, why can't, why do you have to drop out to get an education for this, for this world? I mean, there's something so structurally wrong with that. So this is a little bit of a, you know, it is getting a very fancy credential. A master's degree from Duke is nothing to snicker at. And it's a master's degree that's as responsive to many of the needs in the world as many for-profit universities, which many of them do a very fine job actually of educating and also are doing it to make money off students. So we could offer a kind of a credibility and I think an integrity in this program. But I hope some of the professors, and this is the part I said, I meant, you should closure ears for it, this is not a good thing. I hope there are some of those people that are teaching classes, you know. I hope that the next iteration, if this, if this is approved at Duke and the next iteration are some, you know, the students in this will basically be building course content for the world because everything we do will be public and open. I hope that we're able to partner with peer-to-peer university and the flat world people and the open ed people and, you know, make communities that extend across, you know, not just local communities, but virtual community and worldwide. We're getting the, we've, we've got such a long list of places worldwide that now would love to partner with us. I'd love to make those resources available to our students, not just to the world beyond our students.
Are, are we also looking beyond the internet and the web at, say, the anthropology of the cultures and societies of the machines themselves?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think that's-
Machines as cognitive.
I think that would be, that's huge. And I think that we would, you know, those would be elected courses that might even be required courses. Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last thing you said.
It's probably the most frightening thing that's happened since our unmanned aerial vehicles are now turning into unmanned aerial systems. They're gonna talk to each other.
It's very frightening, yeah. And in fact, one reason I want one of the, that we've talked about, and this is from many consultants in the technology world, that I would like the fourth required course to be a course on assessment and data mining, is because you can't talk about assessment and data mining without getting into some of this. A little bit scary. You know, anybody who thinks Google is free, you know, the adage is if you're getting it for free, you're the, you're the product being sold, not the consumer. And that's closer to reality than many, many people know.
I decided to teach a course in espionage and psychological operations and there's a lot there that I think could be relevant to the latter point that you mentioned.
Definitely. I mean, I don't think of myself as a technology utopian at all. I, I think of myself as wanting to give students and myself some tools for dealing with the world that we're not gonna change, so we'd better be armed and, and understand a lot more about it. Yeah. And so that, that side of things is really important. I also like the, like the students who are learning deep, deep knowledge of how historical change happens and how cultural change happens, don't have to be quite so reactive to think that everything is the first time it's ever happened in the history of the world and that it's all good or that it's all bad, but have some kind of real grounding in what historical processes are, what the rhetorics of change in the past are, what the epistemologies and ontologies of change are. And use those in practical situations to help people right here in Durham who are losing newspapers and businesses and other things because they don't have the resources to see this as anything but a reactive situation. The whole world is filled with businesses on the verge of going under because people are reacting and not understanding the larger implications and the larger processes that have happened before. That's why Taylorism and, you know, Taylorism is invented in the year after the panic of 1873. Taylor decides not to go to Harvard Law and decide to go into a factory for the stopwatch because he's, you know, he's reacting to the panic of 1873, which is far more like the general financial crisis we're in now than the Great Depression was for very similar structural reasons. It's, you know, it's not, it's not a coincidence. And learning some of that is an incredible tool for students who are then gonna go out and find jobs and have a tool that, that, that their employers, future employers don't have either.
I have some central compact discs and I have steel punchable holes.
Yeah. Yes, exactly, exactly. Yes?
Oh, so one of the things I found, uh, I guess really interesting were the four courses that you heard talking about and just the whole program in terms of breadth and depth. But I guess that brought me to the question of what, where are these students going to come from? Right, where are students going to come? And we have a hard time teaching, I'm in computer science, we have a hard time teaching data mining to our graduate students. So how are we going to do that for students from, like, what do you expect the background?
Right. Well, first of all, my, I would love it if our first cohort of class, of the class were a cohort rather than fifteen or twenty brilliant students. In other words, that we really look for people who do media arts and people who are philosophers and people who have, who are computer scientists and people who work in the environment and people who are business students and who want the thing the other person has. And then the first thing where the, I think one of the operative principles of this, of the program are constantly to make pairs of people who have different skills and do a lot of, not only peer learning, but then consulting and guidance based on peer models and collaborative models. My guess is there will be some students that do better in some fields than others. And my guess is that if we can also really think about assessment ourselves in a different way, we'll find that maybe the person who's not so great at crunching numbers has a brilliant insight into what the underlying epistemology of that method of assessment is. I mean, standard deviation gets invented in, for the industrial age too. That's Galt, the famous eugenicist who starts deviation from the mean and deviation from the norm. You know, somebody who can really think historically and critically about the deep structures of the methods we use to decide what's good might contribute as much to the group on data mining as the person who's great at crunching the numbers. And that's the kind of partnerships I'd like to see contributing to the group. But it may take us some really thinking, can you do a master's degree pass if I don't like it? I don't know. I don't know. I, I mean, I hate, as you all know, I hate, or maybe you don't, but I'm kind of made my mark in the world by crap, by saying how much I think grading is ridiculous. And I don't know what's, what's allowable for grades here. Other questions?
Is there going to be room, is there compatibility for non-traditional students? People who are already employed?
Oh, I'm guessing that the cohort, the first cohort will be about probably, we used to think would be about two-thirds, people recently out of college, we're going, oh my god, what do I do now? You know, I don't know. Nothing I, I, you know, my background doesn't prepare me for this world, what do I do? And one-third people were coming back. I'm guessing from having been at Mozilla, that, at this festival in Mozilla, that it might be half and, half and half, that half the people might actually be people who've been out in the work world for ten or more years even. And, or out in the work world without jobs and looking for some kind of education. We talked about the four plus one program, but I don't think that's, Deans, is that anywhere near?
I think the, it's, it's hard to think of the four plus one and three plus two working for, for budget payments because it would be another-
It's a great idea. I know Stanford worked it out. Duke seems incapable of doing it. It's too bad. It's, you know, where your senior year, you're also enrolled in a graduate, in a master's program and making, making a, um, hitting a master's degree that's really, a two-year master's degree and one year because you're taking master's classes your first year. It's been going on for like three years now, at least that I've known of where people have not been able to work it out. Maybe if we create this program, it'll put the right kind of pressures on the system to see if we can make a financial model that'll work-
In the current context, effectively right now, what it would mean is that the tuition that's already paying for the, you know, would have to be essentially shared with this and that's gonna create-
Right.
Bigger.
Yep. It's an institutional barrier. It's an institutional barrier, but we might, you know, who knows? We might be able to find some way of doing it. Yeah.
I think the other question though, is that it is a full-time degree and not a part-time degree. If I follow that, that it's designed not for people who are maintaining a job and taking courses. It's designed as a full-time degree.
It's designed as a full-time degree?
At, in current, in the current-
In the current form. It, you know, it's a little, you know, if you're actually doing a year where you're resident in a learning institution or a cultural institution or an arts institution or a community institution, might be harder to do that and then come back once a week in a proseminar where you're talking about what you're learning with consultants and people who have experience in those fields, including many of those people in the community. It's harder to imagine how that would work in a non-traditional one. I don't know. Maybe. I mean, I, I'm not, I mean, I would love that, but I don't know, I, I, I don't work, I don't, I don't know how to do that yet, but, and I don't think any of us do. You know, and I don't wanna talk about it being I because we've all been contributors, but, yeah. It's, it's very appealing as a possibility.
I'm struck by the notion of you thinking about some of the practitioners teaching the program. Will all of the students need to have a bachelor's degree and all of the, be the master's?
I, I am really one, I hope not, but I don't know. That's an area where I have to defer to Dean. I would love, I mean, you know, like some of the people, again, that I've been, that I meet in the world who don't have, some of the smartest people I know, um, you know, some, some of the smart people I know very, very well don't have degrees.
Right.
Some of the most intellectual people I know don't have degrees. I don't know if they wanted to come back and get a master's. I don't know. Joey Ito, the most famous hacker and one of the most, yeah, a sixteen-year-old and now one of the most famous entrepreneurs in the world, went back and got a, is getting a PhD from Todei at Tokyo University. He's never gotten any degree. I don't even think he's gotten a high school degree. You know, Todei can do it. You know, I think Duke could, but I don't know. I don't know the rules on that. Do you?
You know, basically you start with the core and you start pushing against the edges. I mean, that's the best, best way of doing that, I think. You don't just, you know, change the, the game completely at the beginning. You have a core program and when situations arise in the program that are interesting, they push against the envelope and you move a little further.
I love his answer. Right, you know we're gonna get some amazing applicant that just doesn't happen to have gotten a bachelor's degree and who is so much the person we want in the program.
Well, you don't accept them as a student, just acceptable as a faculty member.
Well, that we can do. That's easy. It's except, it's the student part that's the accreditation part. Oh, as a faculty member, I would, I would wanna have a core faculty who have succeeded and whatever that means. Yeah. Oh, totally. No, we're on completely the same. Right, yeah. Other, other questions? Are people feeling like most of the questions about the program are being answered? And we've got two deans and a program director here if we, yes, Bob?
Do you have some exemplar students that you have in mind? I have a suspicion that maybe you do it. So we've talked about who we want to come in at the front end. What do you think they're gonna do afterwards? What are you preparing them for the real world?
You know, I think they could do, there's so many things. And I think they could do anything, you know, depends on their, I would love to have a cohort of students that were like super aggressive entrepreneurs and idealists who wanna change the world and, you know, work for NGOs or people who wanna work, make the library what it potentially can be, which is, you know, in a world where you have to pay a lot of money for bandwidth, the library is most important social space we have right now. You know, if, if the, I, actually I would love to have a social space where people from the town could come and have free grandmas too and contribute, and contribute in that way. But, you know, I think there's, I can almost not, I, you know, I don't even know what those possibilities would be. The five, this, when I put out this call for this wacky course this term, this future class this term, I was amazed and I got responding from people who responded all over the university. And I would imagine that similarly, we're gonna get a lot of people. I think the, Bob, I think the application has to address that issue. You know, not the, why are you coming into this program, but what do you wanna do when you get out of this program? And how flexible you are, are you to having your world rocked and changing that by the time you leave? You know, but, but I would love people who are coming with a different vision. You know, speaking now as a humanist, which I don't, much to my deans' dismay, I don't do all that often, I, I would have to say that one really terrible thing that humanities have done is define ourselves against, too, too often define ourselves as that which doesn't give you a job. As opposed to like we're in the information age, if we don't own it, who does? Right? I mean, we know, we know how you read, write and communicate and what the history of reading, writing and communication are. And, you know, so, so there's some, some part of that that I want to address. You know, that the, the two, the two cultures are another one of those things that got invented for the industrial age, right? And that can't be, well, I don't have to tell Bob the dean this, it's terrible for science if you don't train people also in thinking about what the deepest implications of the science are and the historical and the philosophical implications of the science you do. You know, that's, that's not a good divide for anybody. So what people do afterwards, I, I don't know, but I've got a feeling it'd be quite varied. You know, and, you know, I, I would, I would hope that the first selection committee would actually select for that, you know, so that we have people with really different goals.
You may have answered this already, but what are they going to do during? So you're a full-time student for two years. How are, how are they going to live those two years? What will they currently fund?
We hope we'll be able to raise scholarship money and have, and have some scholarship money. That we've done a business plan with, do you not know what we planned? Did we plan with? Right. I don't, yeah, we've done, we've done several different business plan scenarios, including ones that have scholarship funding. We're hoping there will be some employers out there who look at this program and say, whoa, we need you to go off and do this program. And that plays into the non-traditional part as well. Two-year program, unrealistic for an employer. But there might be some way we could think about that and arrange that so that somebody might be able to take a furlough from, for a job for a year and they should come in and learn some intensive things that'll be very useful.
Would, would there be any opportunity for researcher teaching assistantships as well?
Probably not initially, I wouldn't think, no. If there's gonna be scholarship available, it's probably gonna be tuition scholarship. If there's going to be scholarship available, it's probably going to be tuition scholarship in the beginning.
There may be situations, I know there are some departments where there are actually more graduate students on fellowship or, I mean, on assistantship than there are classes for them to teach. There may be some of those students who would love to be teaching this program for what it gives them for their whole portfolio for when they go out to the world. You know, that's another kind of identification I'd like to be able to make of need and, and what this, this program is so, it would be so unique that it could supply a lot of different possible opportunities. But that's a, that's still a kind of question. Other. Thank you so much for your time today. I'm really grateful to see so many people willing to take time on a Monday afternoon before Thanksgiving.
Did you maybe just want to review first again what the next steps are from this meeting?
Yes.
Where, you know, what either people have attended or your thoughts on, on what stages of progression are and how we move from here to, yeah.
That's a brilliant slip on my part because I hate the next part. This is great, I mean, this is exciting. The next part is marching in through many committees, which actually, I don't think, actually going to the committees is that difficult, but there will be a lot of scheduling and setting up the process. David, you probably could tell us much more than I.
Well, it's a degree program, so the process at Duke is to, it's a graduate degree program, so there's a, it has to go through the graduate committee, it has to go through the provost's academic programs committee, and then it has to come to the academic council. And then it has to be signed off on by the board of trustees. So it's a, it's a new degree program, so it runs all of the review and analysis necessary to actually create a degree at Duke, so probably...
My gut is the easiest committee is going to be the board of trustees.
Yeah.
I mean that, I mean that.
No, 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 they'll, they'll, no, they'll, they'll sign off on it if the faculty committees and the provost and everybody else thinks it's a viable program, yeah, sure. So it's about a, about an eight-month process, basically.
And just, you know, my sense is that if you leave the meeting with a sense, among other possible forms of connection, that you might want to entertain further possibility of being a core affiliated faculty in some form, that that would be one of the most helpful things to be able to, to pass on in addition to other possibilities and learning about it, seeing what emerges. But I think that that's really going to be a viable additional step. Kathy has already, you know, done an amazing amount of work with, with her, with her team, the Haystack team, and with other colleagues, but, but I think that really is, is going to be key. And so I would just invite anyone who wants to really pursue it actively further, just to underscore that point of finding ways to...
Which really connects to the comment that Ian made earlier, which is that, you know, there, there's a core group of courses and a practicum to run and all of that, but the people who want to commit to this program actually have to commit mentoring time, which is the real crucial issue. So being actually, you know, finding this to be a program that you might want to commit to really means also committing to actively engaging the students in the program in ways other than simply offering courses or, you know, teaching a core course or whatever. So that's the, that's the crucial next step for people in the group really interested in pursuing the possibility.
Yeah, I think we need, we absolutely need a solid core group faculty. I also though want to be able to use and take advantage of all the things that university has to offer. Though one of the required courses that we're talking about is Concepts and Practices for Digital Age. And that's a class where, Bob, I'd love to have you come in and lecture about how the concept of the genome is dependent on information and what, you know, in other words, and how that's changed in, in even ten years and what that's about, you know, because you would have a specialized knowledge that would be so vital to the students. And you might, you may or may not, I would love you to be one of the core members of the class and you know that, and we talked about maybe team teaching sometime, and I would love that. But even if you couldn't make that kind of commitment, just to talk about, yeah, my world, I'm a, I'm a, you know, I work in genomics and my world has been changed because of the kinds of things that are happening in the digital age, that would be invaluable. And that expertise would be invaluable to students. I think we tend to be very limited, at least on first glance, of what the information age really means and how the digital has changed our lives. So many, many, many points of entry, little, big, jumping in the pool with balls, you know, sniffing and stepping a toe in the water, all, all are invited, all along. Do you, Tori?
I'm just wondering, how does the FHI connection work?
I, um, I think Ian sort of inherited me.
No, no, I mean, like, when you're talking about it being located in FHI.
Right.
Versus the graduate, I mean, I just don't, I don't...
Right, right. And we program needs institutional help. And Haystack is an affiliated center of the Franklin Humanities Institute. It's a strongly autonomous affiliated center, so Kathy and the other faculty involved, both here and at other institutions, really take the lead. We can pay no rent for anything, any of the wonderful things that Kathy and Haystack accomplishes. But a new degree program would require institutional help. So we've been talking along with Deems, Aravind Mudan and Belle for the past year or so about the program, what might emerge. I'm very interested in FHI being that institutional partner, but this is one of the things that we're also going to have to learn from the various committees, from the graduate school, and the directions that the degree takes, is that the best thing? It's a strong, very, very strong interest of mine, but I really want to follow what emerges with the faculty in the program to see whether that's the way in which we could best serve and support this. That's been our thinking thus far. The FHI has not been an institute that has been in any way formally connected with a degree-granted body. We work with departments, colleagues in departments, but don't have that relationship. So we're going to have to sort out exactly what that means institutionally. It's a, it's a new model for us as well. But it's, one of my, my top priorities is for the FHI to be supporting and engaging the digital media revolution, and this is an amazing opportunity for us to think about that. If I can, I just, you know, I don't want to cut off other costs, but I really want to thank Kathy and everyone who's been working on this, it put in just an absolutely extraordinary amount of work over the past year to, to get to this point. It's been incredibly invigorating and exciting and to just be in this room today with you presenting this with the virtual world, but it's Aravind, I assume we're twittering or tweeting this, there are probably comments that are going on as we speak.
The back channel is active, yes.
But also just to all of you colleagues for, for being here to, to support this moment and to think about what might come next. But thanks so much, Kathy, for getting us here and convening us today.
It's one of those things that you say from my dead body. When David wrote, I'm like, yeah, a master's degree, I'm really going to do this, having decided I never wanted to be an administrator again, like, duh, I'm going to do this. But then the more I thought about it, I thought, wow, there's a kind of an autonomy to a master's degree. And a connectedness to a master's degree, that's an opportunity that you don't have either with an undergraduate or a graduate degree. That's what, that's the question that has been asked, is why a master's degree? It's kind of its own little niche. And what an amazing opportunity to be able to model as many different kinds of education as possible. I mean, if we could, if Duke could crack this, I mean, we already have programs, as I said, in other countries that are imitating what we're doing. I might get probably two, three emails a day, would you say? From people who've heard about it, who are interested. So if Duke could crack this, we could really be a beacon that's very, very different than just a program at Duke. And if I may return the compliment, I mean, how cool is this, right? You know, to be in a humanities lab and have this be the site of a master's in knowledge and networks, that's a kind of a, kind of a great opportunity. And it already makes you think, you know, the planets are aligning in a different one. So it's a pretty easy one. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Write us if you have further questions or comments, and we will be collecting cards on the way out. People at, at either door, grab those little cards, we really want to follow up on these. Thank you so much, everybody, thank you. Hey, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Do you want to head down the hall? Should we head back to our homeland or stay here? Either way is fine with me. I just want to enter the rest of the...